No, my mom won't tell me.
Take share. I'll lay him some.
I'm back where I belong.
So we can stay out.
You say it's kind of like you can't do it for the people can't fly together.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
All right, it's six o'clock. We're calling meeting to order. I ask Commissioner Wood, Wood, for over tonight and have a pledge of allegiance.
Stand right, please. Father, we just want to thank you for your blessings and thank you for opportunity to come for you and ask that you would guide us with your hand, that you give us your wisdom, that each and every blessing would be on every citizen of Tiff County and our surrounding counties, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, anyone in the audience who'd like to speak to us for five minutes about anything?
Promise and we'll make it happen. Chris Virchell, twenty-four fifteen, Madison Drive, unincorporated Tiff County. As we approach this SPOS seven action, I don't know if it's on the agenda tonight, but sometime. There's just four numbers that I kind of want everybody to keep in mind, just four numbers. One is eighteen point seven. In twenty twenty-one, the percentage of our local sales tax was paid by visitors was eighteen point seven percent. It wasn't sixty, or fifty, or forty, or thirty, or even twenty. It was about eighteen point seven percent, meaning we were paying about eighty-one point three percent for the keeps up. Second number is one thousand three hundred and four. I use some, an estimate from the Economic Policy Institute for an average Tiff County family of four spending sixty-six thousand dollars a year on their personal expenses. And I put that into my calculator and the number I got was one thousand three hundred and four dollars would be the obligation that average Tiff County family of four would pay over the six-year reign of SPOS seven. Of course, your mileage can vary. You can go to the website, tiffcountysalstaxpayers.com, put in your own estimate information and kind of get your own number of that. Third number, zero. The number of city council members and commissioners who have expressed any interest in raising the property tax, millage rates, in response to the possible failure of the SPOS seven referendum is zero. There's no, no one's voiced any support for that, so as a property taxpayer, I feel pretty confident that my millage rate is secure. And then one last one, eight hundred and twenty. In two thousand seventeen, eight hundred and twenty people in Tiff County came out to the polls and decided to approve SPOS six, which is honestly a very small number considering how many potential voters we have here. And I understand that it's an off-year election, it's a, it's a, you know, in my case, that's the only thing that's going to be on the ballot on November seventh, because there's, don't let it be said either. So it's hard to get people to participate in that, and so I just, I just wish you luck. I hope you're able to kind of inform people about how it impacts their lives and they're able to kind of vote in their own interest on that, on their referendum. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate it. Anyone else want to speak to us? All right, see if they'll move, they'll move on. Do items be added to the agenda, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I've heard you haven't got one up in front of you, because there's actually three items. One is what you do have in front of you, which is a purchase for a vehicle. For animal control, purchase of a new animal control. It's twenty twenty-three Chevy Silver Rudder, uh, Silver Rudder fifteen hundred. And then I will be handing out to you a rental agreement for a five hundred kilowatt portable generator. And then also, and then item on the purchase of a five hundred kilowatt generator and automatic transfer switch. So three items. Truck purchase, rental control, rental agreement for a portable generator, and then purchase agreement for a five hundred kilowatt generator and company automatic transfer switch.
And the item that's already listed on your agenda, condemnation of the red oak road.
I got you.
Paying. There's four items to add.
What did you say that?
I said, and also the item that's listed on the agenda, the condemnation of the property and paying that for two. So there's four items to add.
Right. All right, we have a motion to add those four items to the, to tonight's agenda.
Sub move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? All right. All right, we move on to the minutes for the regular session for July the tenth, twenty twenty-three, executive session, July tenth, twenty twenty-three, and call session, July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Everyone's had a chance to look at the, but entertain a motion to approve.
Sub move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? All right, thank you. All right. Do you have the public hearing, or we maybe explain to us if it wasn't necessary, but I get since it was on the workshop agenda, we have to address it as I agree.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I apologize. I'm still trying to get square over here. What's the question, sir?
The public here, and we talked about the workshop, this one actually was not necessary, but since it was on the workshop agenda, I'm assuming we got to address it.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and Chris is here, but it's TCZ eight twenty-three dash oh nine. It's a petition by Mr. Patel for a twelve-by-subdivision. It's on thirteen point eight acres, and that's located corner of Old Willa Shore Road and Mount Olive Church Road. The tax map is in front of you. The question was, as I said at our workshop meeting, Chris and I were discussing several subdivision updates. This one actually does not include any interior roads. All the zoning is already properly, it's in place. And as long as there's no development of the interior roads, it will not require approval by the board of commissioners. I think Mr. Patel's tried to explain, I think he not, didn't do a good job of this, and well, I said that through all time, but, but we went through the, we went through the public hearing process and, and, you know, to make sure that we're transparent, everybody understands why that happened. That's the case, we didn't want to deprive anybody of the opportunity to speak, commissioners, and that, even though, by right, Mr. Patel has, has not, has not required for approval.
All right. So we're going to let Tony go through the public hearing? Okay.
Right, so we'll process the matter as we will take comment in the public hearing and then after the review, so I'll course through the conflict of interest issue. So at this point, we're open to the public hearing for comment for TCZ eight twenty-three oh nine. We'll take comment for anyone presently that supports this application, that cannot speak. Is anybody here that supports? Okay, and we'll also then take any comment from anybody that's in touch. Being noted, comment, we'll close the public hearing. This issue is with the board, ready for action. So I'm just asking whether any board member has any themselves, any family member in the business has financial interest in the property that is issued, so please declare. Correctly, that there's no conflict of interest.
This, this is, this is rubber stamp voting. Let's just say what it is. It's, so we got to walk through the process, but it, it should be important. So it's ready for ration, and my recommendation is, hey, you have this left.
All right, we have a motion for this rubber stamp voting. Remember, have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Wood.
Second, all in favor?
All right, thank you. All right, move on to our consent agenda. Item seven point one, motion to construct an additional safety cell inside existing metal for offices at the Tiff County detention center for a cost of twenty-four thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and be funded from SPOS six. Seven point two, motion to approve the email security contract with Think Guard for a cost of eleven thousand forty-four dollars and nine nine cents and be funded by General Fund. Seven point three, motion to purchase three thermal imager cameras for a cost of nine thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars from municipal equipment company to be funded from SPOS six and installed in the new fire engines. Seven point four, motion to purchase four thousand foot large diameter supply hose from EST Fire and Safety for a cost of twenty-nine thousand four hundred and be funded from SPOS six. Seven point five, motion to purchase a set of hydraulic rescue tools from municipal emergency services with a sole source provider for a cost of thirty thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars and be funded from SPOS six. Item seven point six, motion to purchase a twenty twenty-three fully equipped Ford Explorer from Brandon Ford in Unidilla for the state contract price of fifty-four thousand dollars and be funded from SPOS six. Seven point seven, motion to approve and upgrade the property tax system with Harris Local Government and the Tax Commissioner's Office for a cost of twenty-six thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars and be funded from SPOS six. Seven point eight, motion to contract a trailer business services for personal property audits for a cost of eighteen thousand dollars and be funded by General Fund. Seven point nine, motion to approve purchase of playground improvement for playground park from Place Side Burke for a cost of a hundred and thirty-one thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and be funded from SPOS six. Seven point ten, motion to approve a letter of support for an additional judgeship in the Tiffon Judicial Circuit. Item seven point eleven, motion to further amend USDA lease to include language preventing the use of ByteDance, which is TikTok. And item seven point twelve, motion to authorize the chair to execute ACCG safety discount verification forms for workers' comp and property liability insurance. Are there any consent agenda items that any commissioner would like removed to be considered singular? See, I'm not, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Sub move.
Second. All right, all in favor? All right. Okay, already on the regular agenda is resolution number twenty twenty-three dash eleven, surplus vehicles and equipment.
Um, the resolution has changed to indicate that these two fire trucks, the city of C- Ocelot is going to purchase those for fifty thousand dollars apiece. So, other than that, they're the same as you saw in the work session.
All right, any questions on this one? All right, we have a motion.
Sub move.
Have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Wood, say it, all in favor? All right, thank you. Item eight point two, voting delegate for ACCG legislative leadership conference. Commissioner Hester has been ours in the past and planning to attend this year. He will and serve in our old again. How many moon pies is it going to cost us?
Two.
Just two. All right. Everybody's okay with Commissioner Hester with entertaining a motion to approve him as our voting delegate?
Sub move.
All right.
Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor of Commissioner Hester being our voting delegate? All right, thank you. Great, take care of the moon pies.
No, just answer more questions.
All right, item eight point three, appointment to the Tiff County Board of Health, advocate for needy underprivileged or elderly.
We've only received one application. Ms. Alice Archie has resigned her position on there. And we've had one application, Mrs. Alyssa Curry Davis, and her term would expire December thirty-first of twenty twenty-seven.
Any questions? You know if anyone else interested? All right, but I'll open the floor for nominations.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Alyssa Curry Davis for that position.
Yeah, nominations. Here none, but close the floor for nominations and entertain a motion to approve.
I would like to make a motion that we accept Ms. Alyssa Curry Davis for the Board of Health.
Well, second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, thank you. Okay, now the two, back to the items added to the agenda, first will be in the condemnation of property on Red Oak Road for paving.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, how are you this evening?
Good afternoon.
The board has, in previous meetings, approved the preliminary engineering on September nine, in September of nineteen, and construction in May twentieth of a portion of Red Oak Road from Whitmer Road to Cromer Road, which is approximately one and a half miles. There are two options for condemning the property that, that is in question tonight. Option one would be condemn track three, which is point six two one acres for six thousand three hundred dollars. Property owner is Margie E. Fowler, Mountain Parcel Shop. Condemn track four, which is zero point seven seven nine acres for nine thousand eight hundred dollars. And the property owner is Linda K. Ford. If you will look on your option one map, it shows a small piece of right of way in, in yellow for the first one, and in green, or excuse me, in green for the first one, and in yellow for the second one. That is just the amount of right of way that the county would need to build the road, minus an easement that the power company would need to relocate their power boats. Option number two would be to condemn track three and track two together. Property owner is Margie Fowler, and for nine thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. Because when you condemn the first part, the, the second part would not be a legal track of record to be anything with. The second one is condemn, condemn track four and track one, which would be thirty thousand one hundred and ninety dollars, and the property is owned by Linda K. Ford. The property in question there, like I said, we would still need to get a twenty-foot easement for, for the, or to help the power company get a twenty-foot easement. And the house located on that piece of property is in the pictures, in your, in your packet. It is in real bad shape, bad repair, has some animals living in it. And we, we've had a lot of talk from the neighborhood out there about taking that. Both of the options are listed there, option one or option two, and it's at board's pleasure. Now, if there are any questions you have about the property or the property.
I am, uh.
Yes, sir.
Both of these options let us do what we need to do.
Both of these options would let us build our road. Yes, sir.
We still got to come up with, what, can I figure right, forty-five, or?
Yes. For, for, for option two, and for option one, you would only have to come up with fifteen, sixteen.
Sixteen, sixteen.
Yeah, sixteen.
Sixteen, more.
You still have to acquire easement.
You still, we still have to acquire an easement, you know, along.
That's not part of this calculation. And that amount's not exactly known.
So we don't know what figure we, we at.
No, no, we do know what figure we're at.
Yeah.
We're at either option one or option two.
But on option one, you still got to get the easement for the power company.
We, well, power companies got to get the easement. Generally, in a situation like this, power company comes in and will help to get the easement while we're clearing, we're cleared for. In this situation right here, since we condemned the land, it would be up to them to get, to get that easement. And if they didn't get that easement, they would either have to swap sides of the road and obtain easement from the other property owners, but it would, all, all the power, right now, there's projects on this side of the road.
They will offer to pay for their easement. Who will?
Uh, I doubt they will.
Would, would option two give them the easement?
Option two would give, yes, it would give us all the property, and we would give the easement, and we would clean the dilapidated structure up, clean it up, get it out of there.
And, and we would then give that easement to them.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Through our, through the overall, with overall project.
You're talking about forty-five, fifteen, sixteen?
Yes.
Be looking at a little over thirty-nine thousand.
Thirty-nine, sixteen.
Yeah.
But the thirty-nine gives us, we can just say, put your land as we can want.
Correct.
It's, it's our easement to give away to them.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I, I'm sorry to say, but this is my first time seeing this. I, I think I need to look at it a little more before I make a decision.
Any other questions?
If, if we, if we put it on next month's agenda, that Jamie Allen, you were. We are out there doing the clearing of the grub and part of the job, but when I own it, I can't clear grub, so, no, I mean, it, it will not hold me up. I will continue on the property that we do have right of way on. We just might have to finish and move off and move back later.
So you're saying that we could, we could put it on next, next month, you would be okay?
Well, it'd be ideal to do it this month, but if we can't, I mean, beggars can't be choosers. I will bore discretion.
Can we please look at it?
Everybody five fifty dollars.
You don't need to make a paper?
Have a motion table.
I would like to make a motion that we table this until next month, please.
Have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Reed, a second, all in favor? All right, table it for next month. Yeah, we have animal control, do any of those next, is that correct? Item added.
Yes, sir.
Kansas?
Good afternoon, commissioners. Um, I'd like to propose the purchase of a new animal control truck, replace one that's in very bad condition. Right now, we operate three trucks to run a daily policy around animal control for Old Willa County. And we have a twenty sixteen F two fifty with a hundred and seventy thousand miles that's in pretty bad condition. Physical, physical condition as well as mechanical issues beginning. So it's got a lot of rusting issues, it's having some idling problems, it's using oil and all those things, so I've been shopping around for the last week, trying to find something that would suit our needs and be a good service vehicle for this community, and I've located one in Baxley, Georgia. After, like, a lot of work searching and hunting down, most of, you know, they don't have a lot of these on the lot that are work trucks and don't have all the luxury bells and whistles on it that we don't need. So I did find this one. There's a couple of quotes probably in your packet. A few quotes to order a new truck, that would probably take three to six months, or, or longer if you notice in this market. But I would like to propose that we purchase the one from Woody, Woody Folsom for forty-five, one forty-four, and that's out the door price, and they deliver it to us.
Questions? All right, we have a motion.
Sub move.
All right, second?
Second.
We'll listen to her. I heard Commissioner Hughes first, so, got a motion, a second, all in favor of person that supports animal control? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now the rental of portable generator.
Mr. Chairman, I've talked to all of you, Mr. Chairman, just, but some of you. The five hundred kilowatt portable generator that operates, is our backup for the, the LEC, our law enforcement, which is, which is the off, you know, the sheriff's office and deposit of the jail, and booking, our, our whole complex. And I'll just read from, which is the replacement, again, item. Backup generator, Tiff County LEC, we purchased and installed, and soon it was built, makes the generator in excess of twenty years old. This is a scheduled generator, we now provide backup electricity to a light district slash power surge, this is the information that, that has been turned into our insurance company. And the last email I saw today, they had a little thing to do, and they were going to be sending a, a letter to look at that. The folks that, with industrial controls who have been maintaining that, that generator for roughly twenty years, gave us a minimum price to repair it of forty thousand dollars, and it could run as high as eighty, I don't see current merit in, of your backing, of course, is that right, Ray? That's correct. That's, that's almost, when you're at the upper end of that, you're looking at, getting close to what it costs to, to replace it. So just to tell you why, and, and I'm just going to talk about both, I'm going to, I think it would be easier, that five hundred kilowatt generator. So the last time that we actually had a power outage at the LEC was Friday night. And it was down for approximately one hour. During that time, the temperature in, inside the jail, in particular, the pods, the cells, whatever language you like to use, where we house, house inmates, and I'm frantic, was looking for what I'm going to find here, rose to, in excess of ninety, ninety-five degrees. You know, I don't have to tell you guys, that doesn't take long before we start running into, into problems. And I made myself a really nice sheet here, which I, yeah, I gave to you guys, because I didn't get it to myself, which lists the things that, that generator actually supports. And, and how I'm looking to benefit it and get it repaired. I'm going to do it from, from memory, maybe Mary can, uh, find you a little sheet. So when, when that, when the power goes off, the things at the jail, the current merits can, can help it, but, you know, immediately you know the lights are out at the jail. And with that generator, it, you know, once the power gets done, or the automatic switch that's in that quote, actually, when, when the power leaves, that switch flips over and the decent generator kicks on. That happens within seconds. Without that generator, we, we have no lights inside the jail or outside the jail. The, the gates that are around the exterior perimeter of that, they don't, they don't work. If you want to go inside of the sheriff's office or the, or the jail from the outside, somebody from the inside will have to, that's just like here, we're on automatic locks, and when power goes out, those locks lock. The doors to the jail cells, the pods, they're electronically locked, so when the power goes off, it must then result to, we have to go and key lock all the doors then, and then unlock the doors, you know. As I just said, if that's the case, then we're doing that without lights. The fuel island that fuels all the SO cars, the, the fire trucks and our ambulances, is that, that fuel island, when power goes off, that fuel island stops functioning. All the security cameras inside the, the whole complex shuts down. And if I'm not mistaken, the house is not here, but I think that also, there's the security cameras in the courtrooms and all that too. All the computers, booking, the cab, it, it's down. Phone system is down. The refrigerators and the freezer, the washing freezer that we have inside the kitchen, down. The oven and the, and the ranges are, are electric, they're down. So the importance of having that, that generator, and I'm doing that for memory, ready to leave anything out?
That pretty much covers everything.
We really become almost crippled without, without a generator. We have to kind of function in a very much a lockdown mode. Biggest concern being safety, not only for our employees, but for the inmates themselves. One is, is dark, and, and we have roughly today, we had two hundred and, what did you tell me, eighty inmates?
We had two hundred and sixty inmates today.
Two sixty today. We generally run, what, eight, uh, there's eight or ten jailers, detention officers there per shift, is it eight?
We'll have forty employees there throughout the day.
Throughout the day?
Yes.
So not only safety for the, for the inmates, but for our employees as, as well. We are in the season right now where power outages are, they have, we were only down an hour Friday night. Uh, we were only down an hour Friday night, with that hour and, and the temperature up to, to over ninety-five degrees. That was to go on for very long, we would, we have to, we would look at having to transfer inmates out of our facility to, to somewhere else. Um, now back to, to, to the cost of this, because this, uh, and, and when I talked to you guys Friday, we were about a day and a half into realizing that this was a problem. Um, a portable generator is available, it's actually an all-beaming, uh, Yancey. And that is, um, exactly Yancey Power Systems. Uh, you have a, a quote to utilize that, and, uh, there should be a picture there that actually shows that nice piece of equipment. It kind of looks like a trailer that can be pulled behind a, if it was a, you know, like a mini semi. That we would pull in and we would connect, and, uh, and it would give us, it would give us power. Uh, the price that I included, uh, here, which is thirteen thousand five hundred four dollars and thirty-seven cents, is actually, that's four weeks rental. If you look at the breakdown, you know, the longer we rent, of course, the, the, the cheaper it is. Uh, but they actually quoted us, you know, it's fifteen, uh, one thousand five hundred seventy-five dollars a day, three thousand one hundred fifty dollars a week, nine thousand four hundred fifty dollars for four weeks. Uh, those, those other items there are the connections that it takes to, uh, to connect that portable generator into our system. Uh, it can be connected, uh, if we rent it tomorrow, it can be delivered and, and, and connected. Uh, that would give us portable power, and, and it would give us backup. I talked to, I talked to the sheriff, I talked to the Colonel Merritt, I, I know that they are, uh, uneasy right now. And, you know, part of these portable generators, a- as with the, the, the generator itself, is that they're not a whole lot of, uh, they have this one portable generator that's available, that's kind of, kind of holding it for us, but, uh, you know, we have a sizable storm event, and, uh, which includes a tornado, severe thunderstorm, or hurricane, uh, that comes through, and then they become, uh, they become extremely hard to find, and they get rented up real fast, and, um, if you want one of the lucky few that got in early, you're, you're without. Um, and, uh, I, I know Jerry Michael, some of you remember that we, we had some generated problems with some of the water powers that we had. Not only were we without water for a number of hours, we were also, instead of pulling water for over a week, uh, and that was strictly generator related. Uh, I'm talking to the, the, the folks at the sheriff's office, you know, we feel like this is a, not only a public safety need, but a life safety need. And, uh, so let's talk about the cost. Uh, we have, uh, if you look at the, uh, the item that talks about, uh, actually the replacement of the generator, you'll see that the Caterpillar generator is, is one that we have a, a firm price on right now, is a hundred and fifteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-three dollars. And if you come right down to that, you'll see that there's an automatic transfer switch in the amount of twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty. That, that switch is what actually handles that changeover from Georgia power, uh, outside power source to the diesel generator. Um, that switch is also that old. The, the lead time on getting any automatic transfer switch, a new one, is twenty to twenty-five weeks. Uh, I, I've talked to our county engineer, actual mechanical engineer, and, uh, I, I've been assured that we can, uh, we can make the current switch we have work, uh, until we can get the new switch in. At the very worst, at the very worst, power goes out, somebody might have to go and manually make that switch. Uh, so if we, if we allow for the rental to take place, we would continue to use that generator. And, and the truth is, if you approve the purchase of the generator, we would continue to use that switch until the new switch could be, could be produced. I mean, all, all I can tell you, when you have twenty to twenty-five weeks of lead time to get something from a manufacturer, I mean, they're not making it until, until it's ordered, and, and they're getting them out, and I, I don't understand that, but that is the truth. Uh, on the purchase of the generator itself, uh, Yancey Caterpillar has one five hundred KW generator. It is in, um, wherever their Atlanta offices are, I don't know if I've been there. Uh, it could be shipped in, in a day. And then I think we're looking at a week to, to two weeks of, uh, of removing what's there and putting what is, putting out in place. And that, that would include, uh, using the, the current wiring and basically wiring that generator to our current transfer switch and bringing that online. So it would reduce our rental fee, uh, substantially. As you see on that first page, we have talked to the three, you know, of the, the biggest, uh, generator folks in, in, in this part of the country, and that's Caterpillar, uh, Cummins, and Kohler. Uh, I have documents that I did not include in your package, so they didn't get it until ten minutes before we walked in. Uh, but, um, the lead time from, um, from, uh, Kohler is, uh, forty to, uh, I don't have it right here.
Cummins is forty to forty-five.
Right, well, actually, um, the generator system, the Cummins, yes, it's right here, and, uh, maybe you're right, it is forty to forty-five weeks, yeah, forty-five weeks. This is actual, the proposal. Uh, it's forty-five weeks, and the price of that with the switch gears is actually one hundred and eighty-four thousand five hundred dollars. So if we were to order that, then we would be out forty-five weeks, and it's still at a higher cost than, than the, uh, than the Caterpillar generator. And Kohler sent us a quote, uh, also that I have here, and it was a, a little more, about fifteen pages of that. If I can flip through, I actually highlighted that one. Um, current lead time approximately sixty-nine to seventy-two weeks, uh, to, to get, to get that generator, and-
Sixty-nine to seventy-two weeks?
Yes, sir.
Yes, that's today is usually every day of hospital.
Yes, uh, I, I, I mean, I, I don't know what to tell you, I mean, you know, if we were, if, if we had not found one, uh, we would really be, uh, looking out the barrel of, uh, of trying to have a long-term rent on, on that, that portable generator. And, uh, you know, at, uh, at fifty dollars a month, that's not taking on the pay for, uh, you know, the replacement. Uh, so, the, the other thing that's on that sheet that I just will mention, uh, if you look there, you'll see industrial, uh, controls. Uh, they're, they're actually, who've been maintaining our, our current generator for the past couple of decades. They are not really in the generator business, but they did find, uh, one Kohler generator. Uh, they think, uh, somebody had bought for another use, and they think it meets our specifications, and I will not know about it until about lunchtime tomorrow. Things I don't know, and I asked the, the gentleman at Thomas, uh, Ralph, listening to a question, and we're on the phone with the engineers, and one question was, you know, how long have they held on to it? If they haven't used it, if it's been sitting there for two years, what has that done to the factory unit? And, and, uh, you know, if you do sell it to me, uh, who, who's gonna, who's gonna do the maintenance and, you know, word goes? You cannot answer that, nor could you give me a firm price on, on what it was, was gonna cost. Uh, so, you know, the only other option that we have, where I know there's a generator potentially on the ground, is the one through industrial controls, and I will not know anything about that until tomorrow, about lunchtime. My concern, uh-
And it's unusual?
Uh, uh, well, there, there are some that I found on the internet.
Supposedly this one's new.
No, I'm sorry, this one is new.
Okay.
There are some usual, the, the ones that are used that you find are, are basically two thousand eight to two thousand and ten. I mean, we'd be getting rid of a, a twenty-year generator and replacing it with a twelve or fourteen year old generator. But we don't know how it's been maintained, who's had it, and that kind of stuff, it really, really, uh, concerns me. Uh, we, we, when, when the power goes off, we do what we need to, to go back up, just like they do. And I didn't even mention the fact, you know, we got a medical unit at, at the jail that we have inmates there, that, you know, that, you know, that you get medical attention when the power goes off.
This one in Albany, uh, you said one in Albany?
The, the rental's in Albany, we can have it tomorrow.
The rental?
The rental, but purchase, the purchase, and, and I apologize, but it, it's in Atlanta, it's the same company, Yancey Caterpillar, or Yancey Power, it is who it is. It's a Caterpillar, uh, and it's in Atlanta, and we can have it within a couple of days. I mean, it's gotta go on a semi, and have to be tracked down here, and then we'll have to get a crane there, we'll take it off, and we'll replace it.
That's the rental.
Yeah, that's the permit.
The permit. The rental's actually the truck.
The new one, right, but they're both, they're both from the same company. The, 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 Yancey actually has the, the only rental unit we could find and the only replacement that we know of for sure right now. Uh, and, uh, and of the ones we've, of the three big manufacturers and suppliers, they have the only one that we don't have any, any time on, and right now they're the low, they're the lowest cost of, of the three. The only one I don't know about is the one that Industrial Controls called me about, and, and I, you know, I couldn't be more frank, I'll tell you that, that there was an outlier there that we won't know about till tomorrow. Do I have concerns about it? I, I do. Uh, the guy sounded very, uh, unsure of, you know, it would not surprise him if he called him back tomorrow and goes, you know, oops, my bad, they don't have it, you know? And, and my concern is, you know, Caterpillar's only, uh, Yancey don't even wait so long, if somebody else calls and orders a generator, people are waiting a year or better to get them, but they're gonna sell it. Uh, right now, we have a contract written, and it's kind of been a whole pattern. Uh, if, you know, if you come down and, you know, the staff recommendation, uh, would be to, hey, allow us to go ahead and, and, and execute the rental agreement and get that, that moving forward. It's on wheels, and as we move the old generator out, move the old generator in, we can move that around, and that can continue to keep the jail with, with a power supply that's, you know, uninterrupted. And, uh, and then on this other one, you know, uh, initially, my recommendation was gonna be that y'all approve, uh, the purchase of the, uh, the Caterpillar unit for a hundred and fifteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and the tax for a switch from, uh, Yancey, uh, to an amount of a hundred and forty-five, five thirteen, but that the board wishes to. Uh, and y'all want us to wait and look at the one that Industrial Controls has got and see, uh, if the warranty's there and the purchase price is there. As long as y'all are willing to, uh, are okay, we're just, you know, basically telling the sheriff, you know, to say, if it's better, then, then execute that contract. If it's not, execute the Yancey contract.
But the longer you wait, the longer you wait, you know? Because if we, you're talking about four weeks' run, that's, that's fifty-four thousand seventeen dollars and forty-eight cents for four weeks.
No.
No, it's, it's thirteen thousand dollars for four weeks.
Oh!
Yes, it's thirteen thousand for four weeks.
Four weeks.
It's, it's three thousand dollars a week, if I'm remembering without looking at it.
That's still a lot of money.
But if we, you know, if we had to rent that for, for forty weeks till we got one of these generators in,
Oh, yeah.
then, then, then that becomes a, a, a lot of money.
Oh, okay.
Uh, so, uh, you know, the, the best fiscal answer is to, is to put, buy the generator that you know is on the ground right now and not, and not let it keep going. Uh, if, if-
It's the new one.
Yes, and as you can see, this is, uh, important because not only did, uh, uh, Colonel Merritt, uh, show up, but the actual high sheriff is here, uh, uh, as, as well. Uh, I, I think this is, uh-
Unless I'm looking at this wrong, on page two of the quotation, look, are they knocking five thousand off if we rent?
If, if we buy, if we do the rental and buy that, they will knock five thousand dollars off the purchase price, so I would-
So basically, we're, we're getting a rental for eight thousand.
I, I listed the max rental and the max purchase price there, I just wanted you to see the maximum cost, and, and you can see on there, I also put down there the labor and the crane rental, I don't know how much that's gonna be, we'll, they don't do the installation, the wiring, that's our responsibility. We have an electrician, uh, who has looked at it, I, I should have a cost estimate, I do not predict that's gonna go more than about ten thousand dollars, uh, for those two items, based on what I've be, been told. Uh, and, uh, you know, I talked, when I talked to you guys Friday, I was, I really was talking about three hundred thousand dollars, because there were a lot of unknowns.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that's come down now, and I think we're looking at sub two hundred, uh, to, to get this done. Uh, but, but it is a, a, a critical, uh, critical need. Um, the state allows for emergency purchases, and you know there now on the security website, but we have to actually list these things on, but, you know, an emergency purchase, or a commission, just like a state agency, has arrived to, uh, to go ahead and make this purchase. We just have to provide all the information of that purchase, Department of Administrative Services, to be on file there to show this board to emergency action.
And Yancey hadn't promised to hold this for any length of time, of course, you're looking at?
I, I, they, they have pretty much given me a head nod, and, uh, if we approve it tonight, it's gonna be there in the morning. Uh, if we don't, then, uh, uh, you know, I'd call them tomorrow and say, we, we, you know, we're still looking, and I, I don't, they never promised. You know, the, the other upside, and, and, you know, this is not something that, when normal folks are, and, and, and be included, would have ever thought about it, but, uh, uh, Yancey, because they are the southeast, the Georgia Caterpillar representative, the, uh, the maintenance technicians that work on these actually work for Yancey. So you have technicians about Austin and Albany, and they're trained by Caterpillar. Um, the, uh, and I ask these questions, because I, I wanna know, how does Kohler and, you know, how does Company do it, other, other day too? And, you know, they're, they're kinda like, if, if you're a car dealer, you can go to a school and, you know, you can become certified, right? Uh, they have certified folks, I don't know where they are or where they will be from, but, you know, if they went down, they would be dispatching somebody who was a, a trained rep, but they would not work for Caterpillar, uh, at, like, Yancey would. So they're, you know, the advantage is the, the availability of parts with, with Yancey, because they do have locations in southeast Oregon.
All right, so the first item we need to deal with is a motion to approve the portable generator utilized at the Tipp County Law Enforcement Center till the permanent replacement is installed, and allow me to execute the attached rental agreement with the PNC policies. So we have a motion?
Some move.
Have a second?
Second.
Oh, what was that?
Commissioner, Commissioner Hester I heard first.
Motion is big, second.
No, Wood, Hester.
All right, all in favor? All right, the second item we need to deal with would be whether you wanna go ahead and approve the purchase of the Caterpillar unit, or if you prefer that Mr. Porter and I wait until we get the information. I'll wait as long as noon tomorrow to get the information about the possible Kohler unit through Industrial Controls.
I, I'd like to make the motion, we go ahead and secure the Caterpillar.
We have a second, and I'll second that.
And can the motion state for an emergency purchase?
For emergency purchase, please. All right, so we have a motion, a second.
I know what we've been dealing with at the hospital, you better grab them while they're there.
All right, all in favor of that? All right.
Thank you. We're gonna make a bunch of lawsuits.
Gotta take care of y'all and the, and the inmates.
Uh, the officer was getting one of a, a bicycle and hooker generator to it and share it with my partner.
We'll go back and rescind that vote.
I'll see that.
All right, Mr. Porter, you got any comments?
That's the only thing I'd like to say, like, I just, Mr. Ralph, that he pointed out that I was wrong, uh, when, uh, when he made his comments about my, uh, about the, the zoning issue, I already said I was wrong.
Can he, can he sign up on his perspective?
That was just, that was just, that was just a gun, but that's right.
First time.
I, I don't have anything against you.
I suppose I owe Jim an apology for saying he was wrong.
You were wrong, he said you were wrong, compare that way.
All right, Commissioner.
You're good.
Yes, I'm good. Commissioner Hester?
I'm gonna wait and see what Commissioner Hughes say when that comes. Nothing for me.
All right, Commissioner Hughes, wait, his on you now.
No, because it's probably not what you want to say. Um, I have a few things I would like to, um, I wanna talk about Coalition Against Big Trucks. Um, some of you may not know, but last year I went to Washington to speak against big trucks. If anybody have ever gone down eighty-two during lunch hour, you know that we have a lot of trucks going in and out of Tipton. And they are big trucks. They are trying to put bigger and longer trucks on the highways now. I am really against that, and I am with Coalition, Coalition Against Big Trucks. I would like to see, and Jason, you can speak to, with me on this. It hurts our bridges, our infrastructure, and the trucks, the people that own the trucks are not going to pay for our bridges in our county to be repaired. We have issues already with our bridges, and the county have to go out there and repair these bridges. If we have bigger trucks on these bridges, our citizens are gonna be held accountable for getting these bridges repaired. I would like to see if our board and our road supervisor was sign with me saying that we, as a board and as a county, are against bigger trucks. Next thing, grants for housing. I have various, I've been receiving calls from mostly elderly people asking for grants to get their homes up to standards. All of us know that money is really tight. I know that the city applied for some grants, and we used to have- I know that the city applied for some grants, and we used to have Dunhoe, we used to have-
Wiggins.
We used to have that in place, and I mentioned this before, we need something again to help our citizens. These are property owners, they pay taxes, but it's hard for some of our elderly people to pay taxes and to maintain their homes. So I'd like to see if we can start looking for some housing grants to help with that as well. Delapidated homes, I'm, yep, I'm back at them again. I know we say that we have some money um, in place for that, I would like to start seeing some dilapidated houses come down. I have a whole list in my kitchen, and I'm ready.
You were, you were busy today, and, and as was I, uh, but I, I, you're on my list, I'll talk to you about that very same thing tomorrow, if that's worth it.
It works for me. Um, I think that's all.
Mr. Trump, I could just, I would like to say that, that if you, as you exit from the building, uh, you'll see a, a new fire engine uh, there, there's uh, one of three that the family purchased, and we have one of those that's currently in service. Uh, the two will be going in service in the next couple of days, so if you would like to see, uh, one of them firing, is, is, they're out front. Uh, I think they're gonna be a little, little, a big asset to fire protection.
Okay, thank you. And we have to come back to Commissioner Hester now, that Madame Hughes is voting on it.
First of all, I'd just like to thank, I don't want to miss nobody's name, but I just want to thank everyone for coming out today. And I hope you all continue to come back and support and listen what we're saying, and kind of help us out. Next, I would like, uh, say Jason, uh, and the staff, and everyone, it's been a long time. This project I've been working on for, from here, maybe about fifteen years, now it's coming to pass. And down on Yon and Dominus Street, all back down there, we are working on that, we have been lifting it up, we have been flooding out, because nineteen ninety, two thousand one or two, it flooded so high down there, we had to move people out. And uh, it's been a while, I've been patient, I know, I've been patient and unpatient, but we just go back and say, Joe, say I'll wait till my change comes, so it's, it's almost there. Well, I just want to say thank you, and we're gonna continue doing that, getting that fixed up, I don't know how long, I don't care how much it'll only take, but I know we're doing, we're getting there now. And also, I'm a public safety man, completely, and I think everybody on the board knows, whatever the jail won't give back, I'm for it, if you just point, man, tell them I called them back. And uh, that's all I'm gonna say, and just let me see this ready, I, no executive session.
That's right.
So I'm gonna make my apologies, I missed the other night meeting, and I was, I had a good time. And I did, you know, the donation was out there, it came back. But I'd like to say, I, I don't miss too many meetings, you know, I don't, you know, I've been here twenty-four, this is my twenty-fifth year. I think if you go back on the record, I, I'm not, might be off maybe a day or two, out of twenty-five year, I might have missed seven days, seven meetings. So I think that's pretty good, so I'd just like to thank everyone, that is how, I don't wanna call no names, because if I call some name, I miss this name and no, you know, so, everyone for coming, and please come back again, and I see some people just smiling and smiling, but I'm not gonna say that. I just killed a little time, because it's time for me to go eat some pork and beans.
Commissioner Hughes brought up, uh, I asked about board being willing to sign, lend or support the Coalition Against Big Trucks, is that something the board is gonna listen to? Look here, you ever ask a-
Come on, you, come on, you know Miss Miriam will take care of us.
Pepper Festival, uh, second weekend in September, if you've never been, please, the, the small little town of Omelet, we appreciate y'all coming down and, and uh, seeing the festivities, it's, it's uh, it's a pretty nice little town, so it's second, second weekend in September.
And also, we get, all received, should have received the invite from Union Church, about, uh, were they invited elected officials to try to promote community, community, and that type of thing, I'm not sure you, look at that and give an answer, but good. Were you looking at us to sign this individually, Melissa, or as?
No, everyone to sign one sheet, and Miss Miriam will take care of the rest.
I saw Greg put his axe on his, and we just all wanted to-
Paul took, Paul took, put his axe on his, too.
Okay, anything else? Do we have a motion?
Sure.
You have a second? Commissioner Rick, a second, all in favor of the journey? All right, thank you, thank you everyone for coming.